We've worked on getting all of the aisles and all of that straightened out and just making our whole warehouse procedure down there look a lot better. You know, Rich has been very supportive of us in the warehouse procedures. We just were able to secure the warehouse so that, you know, there's only one entrance to the warehouse now where we have an emergency in the evenings with fobs for the gentlemen so we can hold ourselves accountable to the inventory that is down there. Also, we have now our warehouse coordinator who is Tommy Davis. He comes to us from over in the ground section and facilities. He's been there a couple of months and working with Christie and he's done an excellent job in helping her with the movement of the warehouse and redesigning of the warehouse. And then we have Dariel Anderson who's come over to procurement as our new procurement technician. And he's learned very quickly in his couple of weeks, well, he's had to, with other staff, but he's done a great job with learning, you know, it's, I've been doing this 20 some years and it's a lot to procurement. And in the short time he's been there, he's been able to pick up really quickly on the procurement process. And look forward to him going to the School of Government and learning all, you know, taking all the classes and learning the processes and procedures and the laws of procurement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the great job y'all are doing in procurement. All right, and P O?
Or K?
Our interns are on their way down here, so.
They're on the job.
Yeah, they're busy at work. Hi, Mayor and Council. I am Kat White, the Marketing and Communications Specialist for the town. And tonight I have the honor of introducing our summer interns. Both of them have excelled since they joined us earlier this summer. And as a previous intern, I am really excited to watch them grow and continue to sharpen their skills and expand their knowledge. So, starting with Daniel, I'm excited to introduce our visual communication intern, Daniel Bizzle. He doesn't know this yet, but we have all decided that his nickname should be Show Biz. Very fitting. We think that's a great nickname for the summer. Daniel is a junior at North Carolina State University studying media communications. He has lived in Clayton his whole life and is a graduate of Clayton High School. He is thrilled to have the opportunity to work for his hometown and local government. He was also involved in the Clayton Youth Theater right here at the town or at the Clayton Center throughout high school. And Daniel has been specializing in videography and has been broadcasting the town council meetings, planning board meetings, and the Board of Adjustment meetings this past month. Daniel, we are so happy to have you with us on our team.
Thank you. Hi, Council. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. It's been a great time so far. And we got the audio backup on the broadcast. So, we're doing good now.
Awesome. Welcome. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
I think Show Biz is definitely appropriate, you know, because you're in the light camera action business, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And next up, we are excited to introduce Jada Smith, our Communication Intern. We know you might be wondering if she's related to the Jada Smith, and regrettably, she's not. But she's still really awesome. So, Jada currently lives in Zebulon in C and is a student at Western Carolina University where she is double majoring in broadcasting and screen and stage. She has a strong passion for journalism, film, and theater. When she's not working for the town of Clayton, she is running her small business that she started this year selling jewelry and body care products. Jada is excited to contribute her skills to the town of Clayton and to learn more about the communications and marketing industry through her internship. Jada, we are so happy to have you with us as well.
Hi. Thank you guys so much for having me join the team for the town of Clayton. I'm really excited and I've been learning so much over the last month. I feel like this is definitely an excellent position for me and there's always room to grow here in the town of Clayton. So, thank you so much.
Awesome. Welcome, Jada. All right. Thank you, Kat. And up next is the interim Clayton Center Director.
Mr. Mayor, I'll pitch it for Dolores this evening as she had to be out unexpectedly. Stevens stepped forward here, so hopefully, again, a face that everybody is familiar with. Stephen Langston has graciously stepped into the interim role as the Director of the Clayton Center in the Cultural Arts Department. For many of you that have known or seen Stephen, he's been here since about 2003, about 19 years. Currently, or previous to his current stint here as Auditorium Operations Coordinator. But with the recent vacancy with Scotty Henley leaving, Stephen is the best guy we could think of to kind of bridge this gap while we figure out kind of how we rebrand and kind of emerge out of the COVID era when it comes to our cultural arts. So, I know, we're really excited on the team side here from the staff to see what Stephen and the rest of his team can do. We're looking forward to giving him this opportunity to kind of help us emerge from COVID and bring the cultural arts to the next level. So, with that, Stephen?
Mayor, Council, staff, thank you guys for this opportunity. We truly are excited. We have a great team in place. We're just going to re-energize, we're going to rebrand, and we're going to do some collaboration that we've been wanting to do. So, now's the opportunity. We want to thank Lynn Austin, the foundation for their support. It is unwavering and we only can be excited for what's to come. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up and helping us out. All right, and Mr. Blaylock?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Rich's staff. It's my honor to be here tonight to recognize several of my department. Now, before I move on to that, I'm going to touch on Christian. It's very obvious he's shy. I had to dig it out of him to find out what had happened. The guy he saved actually told me about it. But that's awesome. Thank you for recognizing him because that's above and beyond what we do for the town of Clayton.
Yep.
But anyways, first up, Mr. Kyle Brady. He's our utility compliance technician. He recently passed his Collections I certification. And, you know, we train a lot. In fact, he was cross-training today with the Operations Department of Water Resources on a repair on Lombard Street. And they finished up late. He's here. You know, we got other members of our group that are supporting Christian, but they're in the background. Anyways, Christian also passed his Collections I certification. Mr. Jake Keier, he went and passed his Collections IV wastewater certification. He took that class back in March of 2020. So, that goes a lot to say for this young man and what he brings to the town. And I'm very proud to have him on my group. And lastly, Mr. Chris Sneed, he's our instrumentation control technician. He passed his B Distribution Water Certification exam. That's not necessarily what his job entails, but he also brings a lot to the table for this town, my department, the Water Resources Group as a whole. Right here, guys, this is what it's about. And y'all, sorry. But thank you for your time. That's all I got.
Thank you. And thank you to your team, too. Great work, everybody. Proud of you. It's awesome. All right, up next under public hearing is a rezoning request 2022-54 RZ Meridian Center located at 935 Shotwell Road.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Today we have the Meridian Center rezoning request. We're requesting, the applicant's requesting that we rezone from industrial light I-1 to office institutional O-I. And the proximity size of this property is about 663 acres, 0.63 acres, sorry, 6.63 acres along Shotwell Road in between Highway 70 Business and Old Highway 70. You can see it on the map. Currently, the existing use is an empty building that was used for all kinds of office and material support for the warehouses nearby. We can see here from Conan's current zoning map that if it's nestled in there between I-2, which is heavy industrial, and then below that is another industrial light zoning district. The proposed zoning district is for O-I, which is office institutional, which we believe, what we'll explain later on, will fit the future land use plan. But office institutional is what it would look like surrounded there. And we believe office institutional will also support the industrial light and heavy area over there. Here's a view from the street. There's not much going on along the street yard here where we posted our signs, and there's not much across the way. As far as future land use map, this whole area is slated to be for employment center. And O-I really fits with that as it'll allow developers to either repurpose the existing building or build another structure that will allow for either office, general office, medical office, lab research. It'll open things up to schools, churches, other things like that, which are all important for the employment center area of the town. Just some permitted uses by right that you might want to consider when approving this rezoning. We have the industrial light, which you'll see, like, covers some industrial things like manufacturing, warehousing, freight, and things like that, which is already in the area. Office institutional zoning districts allow for other key things that will fit into the office institutional areas such as employment centers such as, as I already said, office, hospitals, churches, government services. There's room for some residency of like, stuff like that, and park fitness entertainment. There's a lot of options that can go there that'll also increase and enhance the residential areas around there as well. We believe that this is consistent and compatible with our future land use of 2045, citing a goal land use one preserves Clayton's character while allowing for the growth and development in appropriate areas. The policy it manages, it allows us to manage through the growth and encourage quality development through the implementation of comprehensive plan. We believe that the review development proposals are consistent with future land use maps. It preserves and develops prime industrial land for improvement grounds as enhancing, as allowing office space in areas where current and perhaps future industrial projects. The staff, planning staff, the planning department recommends approval for this, for those rezoning. The planning board recommends approval and requests rezoning is consistent with the previous 2045 goals and policies that we have set forth. Some considerations. Approval of the rezoning would allow any permitted use within the O-I zoning district to be constructed on site. So, town council needs to consider all these potential options when approving the rezoning. Before taking action on the rezoning, town council should consider the recommendations from staff and the planning board. Town council may have approved the rezoning, deny the rezoning, or send it back to the planning board for additional consideration. Concurrently with adopting, denying, or remanding any rezoning, the town shall adopt a statement describing whether its actions is consistent with the adopted policy and plans of the town and explaining why the town council considers the action to be reasonable and within the public interest. And here we have a provided statement of consistency and reasonableness if you two do decide to approve it. Happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Any questions for staff? If not, I will take this, thank you. I will take this opportunity to open the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Bob Spence, I'm an attorney. You've been here before. And I rise to speak in half of Meridian, who is the applicant for this rezoning. And this property is zoned in a classification that's PDC, which came out of the 2000 UDO. It's now three, three back. The third back, so it's sort of buried in history. We're trying to rezon it so it'll be consistent with the current. We're trying to rezone it so it'll be consistent with the current UDO and will have a use. The PDC use was a use which is a flex zone. I've got the, I've been here enough, I've got the old code from 2000 and dug it out to find out what a PDC was. And it was basically a flex zone for B1, B2, B3. Okay? And this, we're trying to rezone it office and institutional because that's what it is. Now, the property itself, you've probably seen and his presentation was so thorough and so accurate that I don't waste your time. But this is the big building, just to be frank. The house building is, you know, the cap that I'm showing you was the old windows and warehouses. They built the warehouses back there, they were operated, warehouses. This was an office that regionally, apparently from what I've heard from Lord Thompson and other people checking back on it, that it was a office where they helped run the North Carolina, Virginia and South Carolina offices of Wind Dixie. It was not running that warehouse back there. It's not, it's not an industrial building. It's flat to the ground. It doesn't have any loading ramps that would be consistent with industrial use. It's basically office space and it's been cleaned out so it can fit the needs of whatever tenant is there or rents it. And the owner who is here would like to rezone it so that he can have a zoning classification that's consistent with your current plan, that's not buried in history. It's consistent with the growth plan, with an employment center, which is office. He presented all that so well, I see no reason to waste your time. I feel like I do have old Ross Perot displays that I can go through. Any of y'all remember Ross Perot, his boards? And, you know, it shows the zoning. This property was adjacent to office and institutional back there where some of the medical offices are. And it backed up to it when they split it off and subdivided it in 2006 and 2011. It no longer is because the warehouses are. So, but it's a consistent plan of development there, office institutional, which would fit the neighborhood and make this property, which is sitting there doing nothing. They did have when, when the fast care units was coming in, they did some years ago, but it's been quite a few years ago, run a fast mid center there to try to expand in North Carolina. So, we're asking to make the zoning of the lot property consistent with the current zoning plan and consistent with the current zoning code and consistent with its only possible use because it's clearly developed for an office space. And that's basically what we want to use it for. We even thought about using it for a gym, but COVID killed the gym. So, we're back here still.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, no one else wishing to speak on this? I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, did you have a comment? I'd like to make a motion to approve 2022-54-RZ Meridian Center and with the statement of consistency and reasonableness.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request 2022-54-RZ. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lock sign, and motion carries. Thank you. Up next under old business is the fiscal year 2022-2023 Town of Clayton Budget Ordinance Number 2022-06-02 and Comprehensive List of Fees and Charges 2022-06-01.
Rich Capola, interim Town Manager. Going to give you an update. This is a continuation of the item we discussed in the previous meeting regarding the FY23 budget. Mr. Mackay, our Finance Director, may jump in here a little bit to help as well. So, a quick overview or a reminder of kind of where we're at. Right now, in front of you, you see the proposed expenditure budget for FY23 that we've developed over the last few months, several work sessions and discussions that we've had. These numbers, with some exceptions of some cuts, you know, with the, excuse me, with the initial request from the overall departments for the general fund, for instance, we cut approximately $19 million of projects out for this year and have deferred or cut out about $3.5 million of overall expenditures to get to that $43.4 million number of the general fund. On the water and sewer side, there was approximately $30 million of additional projects requested this year. We've had a lot of discussions about the water reclamation facility over the last several months here that have really indicated to us that deferring any of the non-mission critical projects that we can do is really in the best interest of our ratepayers right now. Additionally, we've cut a little over half a million dollars as well from the overall budget. We cut more than that, but after getting some additional information about increased rates from our partners in Raleigh and Johnston County, we've had to balance that as well. That gets us to that $34.7 million on the water and sewer fund. Excuse me. And then on the electric fund, similar, we've done a reevaluation of the CIP for that project, or excuse me, for that fund as well to make sure that any non-mission critical projects are going to be deferred and reevaluated between now and the end of the calendar year as we've discussed. But overall, we cut approximately $3.5 million of initial ask out of that budget to get to where we are today. Additionally, the strategies that we're imploring for, well, really across all three funds, our major rolling stock and major investment in either equipment or vehicles will all be deferred to the middle of the year. We've provided for funding in the budget here, but we've also looked at doing basically debt service to offset that. So, effectively, if we do not spend the money on those items, we do not take on the debt service for the year. So, that'll net out that mid-year when we do that review. Additionally, when it comes to new positions, we are still in the position where we're, excuse me, we're still recommending the five positions that previously discussed. One, in the inspections Department, just based on workload and pending projects that are coming down the pipe. And then four police officers. Again, those four police officers will allow our police department to add an additional patrol unit for each shift, just better coverage within the town and better backup for our existing officers that are on there. Did want to note that overall, that there were 27 total positions requested as part of this budget. We are recommending these five at this point. And again, mid-year, once we see if there is some additional workload needs that are not being offset by some of the other process and/or contracting capabilities that we're, options that we're taking on, we'll look to see if there's any additional requests to bring some of those positions back mid-year. But effectively, those five positions are what's being asked for at this time. So, a few updates based on our conversation at the last meeting. You know, one of the questions that we've gotten from several in the public as well as from you all is really kind of where are the increases coming from? The short answer to that is pretty much it's across the board. Everything from our people, which I think everybody understands where we're at with the labor, the labor market currently, not only being able to get people to fill the positions that we have needed, but also be able to retain the ones we have. We have requested the 2% COLA to go into effect July 1st as part of this budget as well as deferring to October 1st, the implementation of our payment plan. But with that, you know, I asked our procurement team, we got a whole team of them, you met them all, many of them today, asked them to go through and just kind of look at invoices and work orders just year over year to kind of start telling us, you know, help telling the story of kind of where we, how we've gotten to where we are today. This is a quick listing. These are some of the more probably, we'll say, general fund items here. Raincoats up 36%, safety test gloves, things that we have to have, up 173%. Turnout gear for our firefighters, 20% up just year over year. Again, this is last fiscal year, what we would have budgeted for to this fiscal year for the same items that we typically use. Police uniforms, 30%, ammo, 94%. Just the outfits of our police cars, you know, the different light packages, laptop mounts, all that kind of stuff that goes in to be able to put one of those police officers into service. All that equipment has gone up about 36%. And even our bulletproof vests, again, 15%. Other items, some of which, again, we've deferred because these costs are going up very much, but year over year, the cost of the same mower has changed 72% in this one case for the same model. Things that we do on an annual basis just to help make sure that we're maintaining our properties, mulch, soil, those are all up by 35, 30 to 35%. On our, and I apologize, this slide looks a lot smaller now that I'm standing in here and it's in front of you. But these are some of the cost increases more specific to our utility side of things. I think I mentioned previously, you know, things like the transformers we use on our, you know, every day, the replacement for things like the recent storm that came through or wire in that, you know, as well. Transformers up, we'll say on average, 300% just depending on which one you're looking at that we need to do, replace. Underground wire up 112%. Various other, you know, conduit up almost 20, 25% we'll say on average. Poles, 180%. You know, every time a vehicle strikes a pole or we've got to add a new one to brace or otherwise, the cost of all of those things that we use just to be able to operate those utilities has gone up significantly in a year. We've looked at making sure that we are only doing, like I said, kind of what we've dubbed the mission critical items as we're, as we're moving forward to maintain that there may be a potential that some of these markets do stabilize a little and possibly there could be some future cost reductions likely from what we're hearing in most of the markets that we are purchasing the things in are that the prices likely will not come down, but the supply will get better. So, again, things like meters, you know, most of the replacement meters as well as new meters being installed, those are, those are paid for at the building permit stage by the developers or by the builder of the home, but the costs of all those things are going up, which is also translating into either our operational costs or increases on our comprehensive list of fees and charges. You know, another big factor, just, you know, just talking about growth, there was an article recently in the John Stonian that highlighted some of the data that Carolina Demography from UNC collects. Just wanted to highlight with that, you know, year-over-year statistics, you know, when you're looking at the municipality, so we're looking at incorporated areas within Johnston County, you know, you'll see on the table to the right there, the data kind of speaks for itself in terms of what we're experiencing here in Clayton. Most other, most other municipalities here in Johnston County are looking at maybe about one person a day moving into town. We're looking at a whole family of five every single day. The demand that puts on our services is significant. Through the years, that growth has outpaced the cost of things going up. So, we've been able to absorb a lot of those costs and growth has, quote, paid for itself in many ways. But when the inflation is outpacing our growth, we are caught in the position that we are today, which is to deliver the services that we feel are core to, you know, any, any family moving into town here, the costs of those are being, are going up. So, one of the main questions that came out of last meeting, you know, we discussed the rates for water and sewer significantly, but the additional ask, I guess, if you will, of staff that we came out of that would be, what would an ad valorem tax rate adjustment look like if we were to implement one of those this year? As you can see on the table on the right, we kind of gave you a few different items, or excuse me, a few different ranges. As noted previously, one penny on the tax rate generates approximately $283,000 of revenue. As you can see at the bottom, the impact of that on the assessed value of a home, the median home value in Clayton, at least according to Zillow right now, is approximately $337,000. The median listing price is about 368. I do want to note that the listing price and what you pay for the house does not necessarily translate to what the taxable rate is. The assessed value typically lags behind. We are not subject, excuse me, we're not due here in Johnston County for another reassessment of those property values for a few more years. So, the county does adjust when things like additions or other alterations to the property are done, but not necessarily just when a sale of the property occurs. But ultimately, when you look at the impact of that penny, we gave you kind of a couple ranges here, or excuse me, a couple, range, but a couple different options here. The penny generates approximately $283,000, up to three pennies, which would be about the, excuse me, the $850,000 of total new revenue generated for a $300,000 assessed value here in town. The 1% would be $30 increase for the annual, the annual tax bill and the 3%, excuse me, the 3 cent would be a 90, a 90 cent, or excuse me, $90 for that 3 cents. What that all comes down to, after evaluating kind of the requests, discussing it with our financial folks, really, I think the recommendation, if you were to move forward with the tax rate, this tax rate increase this year would be approximately, to implement a 2 cent tax rate increase, that would generate approximately $560,000. That rate has an impact to the ratepayer, again, for that $300,000 assessed value home here in Clayton, that's about a $60 annual impact to the total tax bill. For $400,000, that would be an $80 impact annually. The recommendation with that, what it would allow us to do is, as you recall, to balance the budget as previously proposed, we had a significant amount of fund balance that had to be appropriated to fill the gap with those costs. We tried to absorb as many of the increases that have occurred as well as defer any of those non-mission critical items, but as it stands right now, there is approximately $5.7 million, excuse me, $5.4 million of fund balance utilized to fill the gap. With that 2 cents, we'd be able to reduce that, that total fund balance assigned down to get us back more in line with what our fund balance goals are to make sure that going into these uncertain times moving forward, we have the available funding to be able to bridge the gap. So, with that, I guess I would leave it open to you all for discussion. I do have the additional information from the previous presentations at the end of this one, if you've got, if you want to revisit any of the previous discussions. But with that, I'll look at Mr. Mackay to see if I missed anything specifically that we wanted to note, but.
Now, I think you covered everything, Rich. The spot mentioned the proposed rate increases. The utility rates align with the rates that are recommended, both are rate on. And the other fees, everything that's changed is highlighted in yellow. There are a few items that are highlighted, right, because those items are meaningful. The other rate adjustments are being focused.
Yeah, just to clarify, because Mr. Mackay doesn't have a microphone, he's referring to the comprehensive list of fees and charges. The yellow items are those that are changed, rates associated with water and sewer for the commodity charges and base charges are basically the recommendations, well, they are the recommendations that were provided by the rate consultants that we discussed previously. And any items that are in red have either been eliminated or consolidated just through restructuring of the fee structure. So, with that, I guess I will turn it over to you and we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Rich? All right, thank you, sir. Oh, yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Sims.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Your fine, Mr. Mayor. Could you go back to the slide on the, showing the cents as far as the increase? So, what's the, I saw the Zillow medium. Do you know what the taxing medium is? Because you, I mean, of course you know that the, you know, that's different than what the actual, do we know what the median and the average is?
I'm going to have to kick to Mr. Mackay for the specific, the taxable base median, the average home price based on our current scrolls.
So, I don't actually have the average home value based upon the current scroll. I requested some information from Johnston County Tax Office earlier today. The numbers on the footnote on the bottom of that annual impact to homeowners, that is information I got off the internet with in terms of Zillow, the median home value as far as listing price. Hopefully, the county will respond to my query and I'll be able to provide that information, but I don't have that this evening to share that with Council or the public.
Okay, I know it's going to be, I mean, you stated that, Rich, that it's going to be less. I was just curious which one, because I had to determine which category most of our citizens fall into.
Yeah, and we will certainly be able to provide that data as soon as we get the broken up categories from, from the tax office.
When's the last time the county did a tax assessment? Properties, property, real property tax assessment?
Reval. He's asking about reval.
The revaluation, you want to know when the next one is? The next revaluation will occur in 2025. It'd be effective for our fiscal year 2026. So, the county will go through and do that reval. It'd be effective, property values to be adjusted January 1st, 2015. That's a six-year cycle. The last one they did was in 2019. After they do this one in 2020- After they do this one in 2025, they're going to go on a four-year cycle. So thereafter, we'll be seeing revales every four years. We're on eight-year cycle, this next one, six, and then thereafter, a four-year cycle.
So to answer that, the last revalue was 2019, next one will be 2025, with an effectively, we'll see the benefit of that in the budget of FY '26, fiscal year '26 for the town.
We collect our tax revenues in the fall, starting November through January. Those tax bills go out, the final in September, they get mailed out. So since our fiscal year starts July, when the tax goes mailed out, they're mailed out after the start of our fiscal year. That's why you see that lag.
Gotcha. Mr. Sims?
When was the last time we taken a tax increase?
Tax increase, last tax increase?
What?
Last tax increase that we've done?
Our last tax increase? We did, I think it was three or four fiscal years ago, we did a tax increase from, I'm trying to remember if it was 56 cents or 55 cents, up to our current rate of 58. And then when we did the revaluation in 2019, we held our tax rate at 58 cents. We did not, we did not adopt a revenue neutral tax rate or adjust it. We just, we kept our tax rate consistent.
I'm sorry, you said 2019?
2019 was the revaluation. And so that would have been our fiscal year 2020, when we adopted our budget. We had performed that revaluation calculation. Our tax rate was at 58 cents at that time. The revenue neutral rate was approximately 10 pennies lower, and we kept our tax rate at 58 cents. If council members, we had a fairly large CIP, we still have a large CIP, but that was the primary motivation back then for maintaining our existing tax rate of 58 was because of our CIP needs.
Thank you.
Mr. Case?
So conceivably, if we were to do an ad valorem tax rate increase, when we had a property evaluation, reevaluation in 2025, effective 2026, if we wanted to look at the tax rate at that point in time and bring it back down, because of course people's property tax assessments will be higher, or you would assume they'd be higher at that point in time, we have the opportunity to do that?
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. Anytime there's a reevaluation, we actually provide what is the revenue neutral tax rate. That's kind of what Robert just mentioned here, what we did back in 19. So that would definitely be part of the process to understand what the new tax rate could be to stay status quo, whatever the funding levels that are necessary at the time.
There's a statutory requirement, we have to calculate the revenue rate, but there's no statutory requirement that you have to adopt the revenue.
And I have another question, this is outside of the ad valorem, if you're okay with that. Regarding the electrical utility rate increase, I mean, obviously, I vaguely remember this, but what year did we actually decrease the electrical rate several years ago, when I guess it was renegotiated with the Electric Cities or, you know, I guess Duke Energy or whoever it was?
When the, I think you're referring to the asset sale that Duke sold back to the North Carolina, North Carolina East Municipal Association, Power Association, they sold their assets back to Duke. That was back, I believe, back in the 2014, 2015, I'd have to go back and double check, but at that point, that was when we, we actually had, we passed through a rate reduction due primarily due to the wholesale power costs reduction that we were going to experience. And so that was the last, that was the last time we actually had a rate, rate reduction. And since that time, we haven't had any rate increases. We haven't, we haven't done any rate adjustments.
So one, one last question. So our commitment with Electric Cities, I mean, I guess, obviously, I hear a lot of people saying, I see a lot of people out here tonight, I guess, wanting to speak or very concerned with this. So we're committed to Electric Cities, I assume, I guess, for a certain time period. Do we, what is that timeframe, or can you kind of elaborate on that to a certain extent?
Yeah, so my understanding is that our commitment is into the early 2040s right now. There may be an opportunity for an off-ramp, we'll call it, sometime in the mid 2030s, but what we've been doing is looking at making sure that we have a viable utility through that 20-year period through 2042 essentially, because as of right now, that is the commitment that we do have as a member of Nekempo.
Thank you.
And I did want to note, we did provide two, two variations of the ordinance this evening. One is the original, or the previous recommendation, that was before you, and there is an alternate if you did choose to go with the recommended two, two penny increase to 60 cents per hundred. All, all other items within those budget documents are the same.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you both. All right, now we'll have some opportunity to have some discussion with council. Ms. Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had four different things that I wanted to address here this evening, and first of all, to say that these are such hard decisions to make, and I know everyone sitting up here worries about how it's going to affect all of our residents, but the town manager shared some good data, some good information about what factors are currently affecting our rates and taxes. So the first thing I wanted to say is I just see no way around the rate increases if our utilities are going to pay for themselves. The way I understand it, a utility rate has to be high enough for the utility to cover its own expenses. So the money coming in from the rate can't be used for anything else other than the utility itself, and these are enterprise funds, which is separate from a general fund, and the two don't mix. The second thing I wanted to make residents aware about is something called system development fees. These are for any new development that is part of the town's utilities, and these fees are paid for by whoever is developing the property. They are above and beyond the rate that the future occupants pay when they actually occupy the property. You can find a list of these fees on the town website if you Google "town of Clayton development fees," and those fees should be reviewed periodically to see if they need to be increased or decreased. The third thing I wanted to address is that I am not looking back in time for someone to blame for the current situation. I am looking forward, and I'm doing whatever I think needs to be done right now to make sure we have plans for healthy utilities and infrastructure. I've evaluated the information that we've been given, and I take full responsibility for any vote that I make tonight. And lastly, about the tax increase, the property tax increase, Clayton is growing, and there are costs that go along with that. And so the way that I've been looking at it is if we want to maintain the quality of life and the amenities we're used to, maintain or improve our infrastructure and balance our budget, I feel that we need a 2 cent tax increase. I've spoken with several residents about this, and in the conversations, we've talked about what if we don't raise these taxes, what are we going to cut? And generally, they don't want to cut the things that they feel make Clayton the place that we all want to live. Others I've spoken to definitely don't want to raise taxes, and they, they would rather see cuts, and I can absolutely relate to both perspectives. But we have several specific high priority items in our capital improvement program that I just don't think should be delayed in addition to using that additional tax revenue to help balance the budget. We have many residents who value the amenities that we offer, and so as I said at our last meeting, I would support the 2 cent property tax increase to get us to where we need to be. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a few things I want to say. I think you, Councilwoman Archer, I mean, I agree, it's our responsibility, that's why we were elected, and, but I get the frustration, I know, I mean, people are mad as hell. I mean, I'm mad too. I mean, you, anywhere you go right now, you see cost of everything is rising. I've read the Facebook comments, I mean, people are just tired of it. They're, they're, you know, they're just, they're just kind of at the breaking point. I have family and I have friends that live in this town that are on fixed incomes that this is going to affect. You know, I've had to have discussions with them on this and listen to their concerns and their worries, and like I said again, ultimately comes back to the cost of everything just increasing right now, and people are, I understand people are at a breaking point. Unfortunately, the town's no different. We are being affected by these increases, and sometimes we get it worse than some of the, you know, private sector does. Just kind of speaking in general, I mean, a little over a year ago, I wasn't necessarily even considered running for town council. I looked at this as a major sacrifice for our, for my community, the community I love, and I can say the same for the rest of the people on this council. Everybody on this council lives in this community, they're going to be impacted by these same rates. We are all working, we have full-time jobs, this is, this is what we do for the love of our community, and this is going to affect us, it's going to affect our friends, it's going to affect our family and that live in this community too. I live in a home that's over 100 years old, so it's not the most efficient, and so I'll probably feel, you know, from, at least from a cost perspective, a lot more. I feel like there's a lot of misinformation out there. I hear things like, we have developers in our pockets. You know, this is far from the case. The current council has said no to projects, and we've said no to projects because we've even gotten sued because we've said no. We've pushed back, we're asking for more, we're trying to raise the bar on the development, and to Councilwoman Archer's point, the town does charge developer fees. We just need to make sure those fees are in line with these inflationary costs that we're incurring. We have a wastewater treatment plant that was built in 1960, so regardless of this wastewater treatment plant or the development or whatever, we would still have to replace this plant that was built in 1960. And we need to make sure that we ensure in the future, any capital expenditures that we have to do, we set aside money in the future so we don't hopefully have to, have to deal with this again. You know, I was told by our previous council that we would make, have to make some unpopular and some tough decisions, and this is, this is just one that we're having to do right now, but we're doing it because we have to do it for the sustainability of our community. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Well said. Mr. Sims?
So just echo the two, our two council people's comments, but all I'd like to say for myself is that at the end of the day, okay, this is a, we would say, decision, I don't even want to call it a decision. What do I mean by this? At the, again, at the end of the day, when you go through things like this, and Lord knows, I've been in every possible thing you can, situation, whether it be from in the Marine Corps to corporate America to nonprofit, to where I had to have data and things like that to analyze decisions. In this particular case, this is what's called a have-to, okay? It's called a have-to. If you think by any means that I get something out of this or I feel happy about doing this, none of us up here do. This is what's called a have-to. Why? Because we have to if we want to continue to operate in certain functions. What kind of saddens me on this is I make myself available 24/7, my wife would tell you that. I've only had three individuals who reached out to me personally. Now, people had all kind of comments on certain things and stuff going on in our decisions, but I was kind of really saddened about, there were very few that reached out to me personally. I have no problem at all meeting with anybody face-to-face based upon my have-to decision. I wish more of us would do that. I appalled those three individuals, I might not have given them the answer that they wanted, but we had a spirited debate, and at least they understood where I was coming from. So again, I've always said this, if you want to be a part of the good of Clayton, then be a part of what's helping to, to be the input of Clayton. Reach out to me or any of these other individuals, and we can have a discussion. Again, it might not be the answer that you want, but at the end of the day, again, I have no problem, and they don't either, I think, in making hardcore decisions, that's what we're put up here for, but I don't benefit from this at all. I have a wife at home that's been asking me, why are you going to have to raise or do this, this and that? So I have to answer to other people right in my house, okay? So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The way I see it, the rate increases for fees and rates is a, is an absolute must. I don't see any way around it because we have to have those accounts balanced, and, you know, things like copper wire going up over 100% for the cost, I mean, that's just the same thing with, you know, we're dealing with transformers. You know, we just had a big storm event this past weekend, and our teams were out there working all through the night, and we had our customers back on by the next morning versus people within a mile of our city limits that were out for over 24 hours. And so, you know, to me, that's, that's why we invest in our public power and our public utilities, and, you know, we get great value for what we pay for, but we only pay for what we need. I think, you know, the, the question from citizens is what can you cut? You know, well, you know, after that storm Friday, you know, do, do we cut two or three linemen out? No, I don't think we can do it. You know, who, who can we cut? And I think we, I went through with Rich even today, you know, I challenged Rich, what can we cut? Let's go through this budget. What can we cut? What can we take out? And we're just at a dead end of things to take out. You know, you've got our, you know, police officers over here, you know, I wouldn't want to take any of them out of the equation, you know? Certain things are just essential. And then you look at certain things that are quality of life, you know, do you take out the library? Do you take out performing arts? You know, what is it, what is it that our citizens are willing to do without? And, and I think if you polled the citizens, they don't want to do without any of those things. They want the same quality of life and they want the same service. And so I feel like, you know, our arms are kind of twisted behind our back with those funds. With regard to the tax increase, I'm not a fan. I think, you know, I went through the same thing with Rich again today, what can we cut? What are we going to take out? You know, and when he went through the list of what they've already taken out, I'm like, that's certainly a bigger list than what we've got in there. You know, when you're cutting, you know, probably altogether more than $20 million of stuff out of the budget, you know, that was cut out from the request that we had, I just don't know that we can trim it anymore. You know, we talked about deferring positions, we talked about, you know, is there something we can put off till the end of the year, till next year? You know, what can we get by with? And we pulled all those things out, and he's deferred, and he's pushed everything from buying vehicles on down, you know, we've pushed and pushed and pushed, and I don't know that we can do any better. I don't like the tax increase, I don't like, you know, having asked people on fixed incomes to do more, but I'd rather ask a little bit now and maybe a little bit later than to sticker shock somebody a year from now with a five or six or more percent raise. I, to me, as a citizen, I'd rather see a little bit of increase this year and a little bit of increase next year if we had to versus a huge jump next year that's going to really shock your, your personal budget. So the other thing, you know, we, we have a lot of discussion about impact fees versus system development fees. The, the state Supreme Court struck down impact fees. You know, we used to do that, and the state Supreme Court said you can't do it anymore. And municipalities all over the state have had to pay back fees that were paid in, but we do have something similar called system development fees. The legislature did give us that. But as Rich said, it can't sustain itself as long as inflation is higher. And so that's what we've got to look at and look at, you know, reevaluating our system development fees so that they can pay for, you know, hopefully come close to paying for their sales, but right now with inflation significantly higher, it just doesn't. It's not that we're, you know, I, I know I certainly get a bad rap sometimes that I'm anti-developer, and I'm not anti- anti-developer and I'm not anti-developer. We just want things done right. And I think that the current seated council has pushed back more on developers in the last year for quality of work, for number of houses, for environmental concerns. We just want stuff done right. And I think we've done a pretty good job of doing that, and I'd say probably more so than any previous council, of challenging developers to bring us more, better quality. And so I think we're, we're doing our best to do the right things. They are paying system development fees, so if they're not getting freebies out of the, you know, they are paying. Um, and so that's something I want to clear the air about too. So with all that being said, I, I just don't see any way around it. You know, I'm going to have to support the rate increases and, and very begrudgingly um, support the tax increase.
Well said. Anyone else?
You're good?
All right. So I will just, um, state for the record that I realize anything that I say can and will be used against me. Um, I'll tell you, this, uh, council has done a tremendous job giving their time, additional meetings, studying homework. They've turned this budget inside out and upside down. And historically, the town of Clayton, when we have needed an increase, we've asked for it. And the reason that we asked for it is because we needed it. Never asked for above and beyond what the town needed to maintain good, strong finances and quality services. And we have had times in Clayton's history where we have reduced those amounts because we didn't have to have it. And I just don't want people to think for one minute that because we sit on this side of this table, that we don't hear what people are saying, that we don't understand their Local government is the best form of government, and I'll tell you why. Because we see the people we serve every day, on Main Street, at the bank, at Jones's or Nancy Jo's. We see them every day. We're connected. You know, a lot has been on social media. And as a mayor, I cannot ignore what I have read. And as a mayor, I cannot not understand why they are thinking that way and expressing themselves that way. I have a huge respect for that. We still live in America where you are free to speak, and I hope that never changes. I have received only two emails about not increasing these rates. And I'm very surprised because throughout social media was constant reminders to contact your town council members. Towncouncil@townofclaytonnc.org gets everybody and expresses your feelings on this. Because our public hearing has already been held and tonight is not an opportunity during this process for people to speak. However, during public comment of this meeting, you're more than welcome to speak. I think it's important to say that while I find value in what I read and hear on social media, I also find value in what people are not saying. And I had one 89-year-old lady call me, prominent citizen in Clayton, to say, I don't like it, but I understand it. And you guys have done a fantastic job explaining why it is the way it's got to be. And I said, well, thank you for, you know, saying that. You're probably like the only one who, who's done that. But we don't sit up here just to rake in the money. We sit up here to maintain Clayton in a good business, strong business atmosphere, being physically conservative, being financially good stewards of the taxpayer money. And that didn't just start with this group. That's been started ever since I've been the mayor of Clayton, that we don't forget who pays the money as we all pay the money. We're, we're included just like the public is included. My wife, Mr. Sims, said to me, why are you stressing out over this? You already know, the only increase that people want to talk about in today's time is a salary increase. And that helped me tremendously put this in perspective because everybody is pulled into financials, the cost of groceries, the cost of gasoline, the cost of everything. It's never easy to have to increase taxes, but I can assure you, uh, if this council continues to be on the path that they are, uh, using their skills that they have, that if it comes to an opportunity for the town of Clayton to lower its tax rate, they will, we will. Because that's what we do and we have a track record for doing it. If there comes a time in the next seven years that we can reduce our utility rates, we will. And we have a track record of doing that. But this year, what's required is going to be 7% in utility, it's going to be 15% in water sewer. And next year, there's an additional 15% in water sewer. And the next year, there's a 15% increase in water and sewer. That water sewer system that's out there on the south side of Highway 70 was built before I was born. It was built in 1960 after my parents over here on Hardy Street built a 1,400 square foot brick ranch in what was a tobacco field. We have done our due diligence to maintain our current wastewater treatment facility, to expand it when we could, to Band-Aid it when we needed to, to help keep costs as low as we could and still be trying to break even. You know, we have to break even. It's not about making a bunch of money, it's about at least breaking even. And that's what this is, uh, these, uh, rate studies are showing us in order for the town of Clayton to maintain. You know, one other thing, and it just popped into my head, I heard and read where the town of Smithfield had the lowest utility rate in Johnston County. And congratulations to our friends in Smithfield. I think the one thing that it didn't say in that article, article particularly, was that how much investment and upgrade had the town of Smithfield put into their system? So when we talk about in 2040, when we are able to look at getting out of this electricity COOP, the amount of money the town of Clayton will receive will be based on the value of our system. And your system is just like a house. The more you upgrade it, the more you expand it, the more value it has. I'm not sure how much the town of Smithfield has invested in their electrical system over the last three or four years, but it's not anything in comparison to what town of Clayton has invested in maintaining and expanding and in increasing the efficiency of our electrical utility. So I guess in short, I'm saying it's not easy to sit in this chair and do what we do. I'm saying we hear the concerns and I'm proud of this council for doing their homework and turning this budget inside out. And that's what citizens deserve.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-06-01 for comprehensive list of fees and charges for fiscal year 2022-2023.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve fiscal year 2022-2023 Town of Clayton Budget Ordinance Tax Rate 60, 2022-06-02.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, jumping down to new business, uh, the next item on the agenda is the amendment to the following capital project budget ordinances, ordinances number 2022-0607 and ordinance number 2022-0608.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Robert Mackay, Finance Director. Uh, tonight we have two, uh, year-end closeout budget amendments related to a couple capital project budgets ordinances. Um, basically, this is a kind of a year-end housekeeping item of formality. We adopt our capital project budget ordinances at the detail line item level. So many times it's necessary to adjust within between those line items because if we go over, if we overexpend, if we report over expenditure on one of those line items, we technically have a compliance violation. So what we're doing here is on Fund 641, which is our Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Committee, we're realigning the construction budget with, with professional services. Uh, we'll more than likely be coming back in the, uh, mid to late fall, once we know the total project cost of this project, and we'll be doing an overall budget realignment for the total cost. Uh, the, the second budget amendment is for the GeoBond Park Projects that we recently issued. Uh, we had some higher closing fees than we anticipated, so we're doing an expenditure realignment there. Uh, any questions? I'll be happy to entertain those and answer them for you.
Any questions or comments for staff? Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, move we approve ordinance 2022-06-07.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2022-0607. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, move we approve ordinance 2022-06-08.
We have a motion and a second for, uh, approval of ordinance number 2022-0608. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Up next, Planning Apartment Small Area Plans Budget Ordinance Number 2022-06-10 Amendment.
I'm here tonight to, um, for a couple of reasons. One, to provide you a quick update on the two small area plans that we have been working to, um, select consultants for, and then two, to request approval of a budget ordinance amendment to add funding to this current year's budget, um, for these, uh, small area plans. So just a quick reminder, um, the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan identified at least four, um, small area plans as action items. Um, the one for US 70 NC 42 West, an update of the downtown master plan, a small area plan for the 70 Business 42 East area, and then the 70 Business Western Gateway area. Uh, based on council direction, following approval of the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan, uh, staff has begun, has been working over the last several months on consultant selection, um, for the first two of these small area plans, uh, an update to the 2010 Downtown Master Plan and a small area plan for the US 70 NC 42 Interchange and Surrounding Area. For the downtown master plan update, we select, we have, um, tentatively selected McAdams team, um, after review of qualifications and interview process. They include, um, several, uh, consult, subconsultants, uh, including Benchmark Planning, Ramey Kempin Associates, Rose Associates, and Mauer Architecture. Um, they are proposing a timeline of roughly six to eight months for completion of the plan. Um, and you can see on the slide there, the different, um, specialties of the subconsultants, including transportation, market, and architectural resources. The, uh, project area for the downtown small area plan is the area generally bordered by US 70 Business 42 East Front Street intersection, Stalling Street, and then Stallings and Main Street intersection. Um, again, this is all area that's generally identified in 2045 Growth Plan as either downtown support, downtown neighborhood, or downtown core. Um, you'll see there, we, our major scope tasks include, of course, review of existing plans and ordinances, review of existing infra, existing and planned infrastructure in the downtown area, um, significant public engagement, including three public workshops, three stakeholder workshops, an online survey, as well as preparation of recommended language for the downtown Everleigh, Everleigh zoning district that would be folded into the Unified Development Code update. Um, and then finally, transportation, market, and architectural analysis and recommendations will also be included. The, as, the project cost is $165,000 for this plan. The, uh, next plan is of, um, what we're now calling the Future I-42 NC 42 Small Area Plan. Um, again, we selected LS3P, um, and that team, and that team includes, um, subconsultants of Kimley Horn Associates, who will be looking at market and transportation analysis, and Surface 6678, which, um, will be looking at landscape architecture and providing guidance there. Um, that timeline is approximately eight months for that plan. The project area for this plan, um, is rather large for a small area plan, but it's the area generally bordered by Amelia Church Road, Winston Road, Cornwallis Road, and Barber Mill Jack Road on the south. Um, and this will take us out to Cornwallis Road so we can, um, help begin planning for that area as we are looking at a potential, um, extraterritorial jurisdiction expansion. Um, the scope is divided into four phases. Phase one is review, phase two is assessment, phase three is empower, and phase four is implement. You can see details there on the slide. Um, again, significant public outreach engagement as part of the, as part of this planning effort. Um, and then ultimately, we'll come out with some detailed recommendations, both for, um, more detailed recommendations for the area that's currently experiencing high growth around the, um, Future I-42 NC 42 hospital area, but then also some higher level, uh, land use type recommendations as we continue heading to the west of the Future I-42. And the project cost for this plan is $175,000. Um, so again, staff requested council approve the budget ordinance 2022-06-10 to allocate funding for these two small area plans in FY 2122 budget. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for staff? All right, thank you, sir. Thank you.
I was just going to say I'm excited to see those two plans come through. I know they were talked about, uh, for a while, um, during my time on the planning board, and, um, I think those are two key areas for our town and, you know, that is one good way to steer quality development or kind of what we want to see is by having a good plan to begin with, so.
Agreed. Make a motion?
Good.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve 2022-06-10 and approve, well, should we have to them separately or do them?
Separately.
I make a motion to approve 2022-06-10.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval on ordinance 2022-06-10. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve 2022-06-11.
We have a motion and a second, um, in favor of the grant, Project Ordinance Budget Number 2022-06-11. Is there any further discussion?
You know, my, my apologies. I think, um, the way that it looks on the agenda, it looks like, uh, back-to-back items, but I actually believe that we're missing some text and they're two separate items. I might be mistaken.
I believe you're right.
It's, okay.
Yes.
Just making sure.
So, um, I'll just ask for a retraction of the motions in the seconds. Good?
Sure.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, so then that will put us to the next item, which is the Grant Project Ordinance Budget, uh, number, uh, 2022-06-11.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Mr. Council, R. Mackay, Finance Director. Tonight, we have rest and council approve a grant project budget ordinance that's related to the American Rescue Plan Act of 202021. The town is going to receive approximately $7.9 million of ARPA funds as a nonentitlement unit. We've already received a little bit south of $4 million. This grant project budget ordinance will create a result in the creation of a special revenue fund. It actually allows the town, by utilizing these funds for salaries and wages, which is totally permissible and highly recommended by the school of government. We use these funds to supplement salaries in our general fund for public safety and public works. It enables the town to immediately spend those freed up non-grant-related funds, which will be in turn transferred over to the water sewer fund to fund the town's infrastructure commitment related to the Copper District project. And we will not be subject to the requirements of the Uniform Guidance Procurement, which has really been causing us some issues related to that commitment. Any questions? I'll be happy to entertain those or go into greater detail if I need to.
Any questions or comments for staff? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, oh, go ahead. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-06-11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, now we'll move on to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Two things real quick, Mr. Mayor. One, just want to say thank you to staff, particularly Mr. Mackay over here, who's spent a lot of hours and probably sleepless nights trying to work on this budget here over the last several months. But ultimately, all the departments, everybody had to make some sacrifices over the last several months to try to get us to where we are today. And I really appreciate those efforts. The second thing I wanted to just update you on was the wastewater, the water reclamation facility. We had an item tonight that we are still negotiating, that we intend to bring back to you in July. But ultimately, we are moving forward with finalizing the bid set of drawings for the overall plan to be posted in late July. There will be a prequalification process for all contractors involved in the project, so that should be posted on the town's website here in the next day or so. And then we'll hit the state's IPS website by the end of the week. There's a relatively quick turnaround to be able to maintain our timeline, to be able to have this project restarted by the end of the calendar year. So just want to make sure that any of those that are interested do look at our website here later this week and fill out the prequalification for those general contractors interested. With that, I will turn it back over to you all.
Questions or comments? All right. Town attorney?
No.
Thank you for being with us this evening. Town clerk?
Neverport.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go to the county RFP discussion.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm here to talk about some ARPA funding. The county has received funding, and they have five and a half million dollars that they're making available to the 11 municipalities in Johnson County. These funds will be used for stormwater, water, or sewer projects. So I have been working on some projects here. Let me tell you what the qualifications or requirements are. Must be ARPA qualified, water, wastewater, or stormwater. The municipality must have accepted its ARPA funding appropriation. Must meet a public purpose and fall within county authority to fund, per NCE general statutes. Identify and directly address a need related to health or economic harm. Support equitable outcomes for impacted populations. Leverage and align other funding sources. Make the best use of this one-time infusion of resources. Have a lasting impact. Provide performance reporting regarding use of funds and project impact. Comply with all provisions of funding contract and complete all work and fully expend all funds by December 31, 2026. The proposals need to be in by June 30, so I got three of them done. I'm working on the last one now. Project awards will be September 19, or at least by September 19. Could be sooner than that. Projects I've been working on, one of them is town to claim the interconnect meters with the county. I don't know if you're aware, but a lot of the pipes, water pipes run through, and it's kind of confusing of whose is what. And we have a pretty long spreadsheet, so I can keep track of that stuff. So this would be to be able to start putting these meters in strategic places, so we could have our own water system, and then the county would be outside of us, and we'd have our own, and make things a lot easier and a lot better for, you know, like our people out in the field and stuff, working on county lines sometimes, and so it gets kind of confusing. It would also, these people that are actually living in the town but paying county rates, and so it would make it the same for everybody within the town limits. So this project, we have it divided into two phases, and trying to get a million dollars for the first phase to get that started. That's that one. Next project, Lombard Street out here, the sewer, looking to realign it to run it down Lombard Street and over to the new Little Creek Outfall. Right now, it runs out, getting rid of the name of the street, another street up a little higher, and goes under 70 and over. It's pretty deep, under 70. They do have a lot of problems with it from time to time, and it's very hard to work on. So this would take a lot of the sewer from the downtown area, and we can pipe it right down under 70 Lombard Street and tie right in. And that way, it's much easier for our guys to get to, and it'll redirect a lot of flow, and we can close off that other pipe under the road we won't even need it anymore. So that'll help with some sewer overflows and stuff that we have from time to time, I guess. That's about 4,000 linear feet of sewer that we'd be redirecting, putting in new manholes and redirecting the flow down the street. Stormwater project, North Cher Street culvert, there's a culvert up there that's eroding away. The headwalls are not much left behind them. Looks like they could fall at any time. There's also some inlets right above them that flood quite a bit. So this project would redo that, would put a new culvert in, new headwalls, and reset the inlets there. Take care of that, would make it a lot safer, and wouldn't have to worry about flooding as much over in that area during the big rain events. That project's about $250,000. Our last project is Highway 70 Waterline Extension. That would run 6,600 feet from, I didn't get it down here yet, this is the one I'm still working on. It's basically from Regency down to where 42 is coming across with the new DOT thing there. We have several lines coming up the streets on the south side there that just dead-end, and so there's no connectivity. There's water quality problems, and, you know, if there's a problem with a pipe, then you might shut people off. This will make a nice connective grid, increase the flows and pressures, and make it a lot safer for the people in case of fire. It'll also add quite a few hydrants along there, too. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Questions or comments for staff?
So you said this was ARPA money?
Yeah, this is ARPA money that the county received, that they are dispersing to the 11 municipalities. Any that are interested can apply.
Okay, so it's an application process or a grant process? You fill it out, and the county chooses?
Yep.
Okay. And I guess we're prioritizing based on what, I guess, we feel is the best need of the town, and what?
Right. Joshua and I got together and discussed some projects we had sitting there and some other ones, and tried to figure out which ones would best fit these type of criteria. They're for, they want them to be economically equal, so both not as well-off people and well-off people are getting served by, and stuff like that.
Very cool. Yeah, thank you, and appreciate you going after this opportunity for the town.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right, thank you, sir. And now, the update on Campo.
Good evening, again. I'll keep this short, but Campo is undergoing an update to the 2017 Southeast Area Study. And so the study update has kicked off now. It covers an area of eastern Wake County, as well as a good portion of Johnson County, down to just east of the I-95 corridor. The study will look at both land use and transportation recommendations, and how land use and transportation combine. Ultimately, the study will be used to inform future long-range transportation plans in Campo. And the biggest piece of information is that the public engagement period is getting ready to open up here within the next couple of weeks. I believe it officially opens up just after July 4. And we are working to have a Campo staff member come and present on the study to you at your July 18 meeting. But Campo wanted to make sure that you were aware about the public engagement period getting ready to open up. They are working on trying to schedule something here in Clayton as well during that period, so.
Questions or comments for staff? All right. And while we have you at the podium, let's jump back up to Planning and Engineering
I wouldn't be a planner if I didn't have my PowerPoint going, so. But I'll keep this short for you. Just wanted to give council an update on our development review processes and some of the improvements that staff is undertaking that we're really looking to start July 1. So just a quick background, we've spent, planning and engineering staff especially, spent the last several months reviewing our current development review processes, discussing some potential changes. We also looked at the feedback that we received from the Chambers Development Stakeholder Group. And we also looked at some of the, we also discussed with the stakeholder group during our first meeting with them, some additional changes, and began finalizing the new and revised processes after that. And as I said, we are going to put these processes in place as of July 1 to coincide with the new fees, or the updated fees that you just approved as part of the budget. So some of these new updated processes, we will now be accepting submittals on a rolling basis. Currently, we accept submittals only, we've been accepting submittals only on the first business day of the month, which is, can be quite a problem for staff when we get seven, eight, nine, 10 submittals at one time, and you have that many submittals following the exact same review cycle all the way through. Now, we'll be able to accept submittals at any time. We're hoping that will spread out the workload more, so we won't have 10 submittals with the same due date. And then we are also going to start offering the development community the opportunity to do what we call concurrent or combined submittals, where they can combine their site plan or subdivision plans with their construction drawings, have everything reviewed together. It'll ensure for us a more comprehensive review. And for the development community, it gets them the ability to begin essentially moving dirt and working on site improvements. About, on average, it's probably going to be about two to three months quicker than under the normal process of doing things separately. And with this, we're also working on some new and revised applications and checklists. We're also, we've updated our review timelines, and just confirming those also, and making clear what those are for the development community. They've been a little helter-skelter, I think, in the past. And certainly, as we've been getting new staff on, we've been trying to figure out what the best timelines are to handle with our workload that we have, both in engineering and planning departments especially. And we also received some direct feedback from the development community that really helped us determine what these new timelines should be. So beginning July 1, we will be, for most part, most applications will have a 30-business day first review timeline, and then subsequent reviews will be 15 business days. We do have a few applications that'll have quicker review periods of 15 business days, and then some of the simple, very simple applications, such as zoning permits, will be five business days. Some other process improvements that we've been working on, we're going to continue to hold our pre-application meetings. But we are going to start having staff review the information we get for those pre-application meetings, using our electronic plan review software prior to the meetings, hoping to provide some better input to the development community during those meetings. And we'll be continuing to work on some other improvements to those meetings, such as getting some, figuring out ways to provide better notes to the applicants, as well as potentially even recording those meetings, since we are holding them virtually on Microsoft Teams. We are also moving to twice a month technical review committee meetings. Currently, we only have those once a month. Again, partly, this is to help us with the rolling submittals, but it'll also spread out the workload a little bit. And then we also will be offering three technical review committee meeting slots for applicants. Currently, we have offered those, but they've been not used as much over the last few months, so we're actually moving that onto our online scheduling platform that we use for our pre-app meetings, so developers can go in and schedule them if they want them. If they don't want them, they don't need to be scheduled. Staff will have the time blocked out on our calendars anyways, but if no meeting is scheduled, we will get that time back in our day. And then, of course, you know, as always, applicants and developers will still be able to request ad hoc meetings with staff as necessary if they need to. Future process improvements, we're going to be continuing to work on, of course, the Unified Development Code update. We expect additional process and application improvements to come from that project. And then another project that we've been slowly working on and will be continuing to work on is trying to get some development case management software put in place that'll help us with workflows and e-plan reviews. It'll provide some automation of what we do. Also, ultimately, our goal is to be able to provide an online portal and go completely paperless, so we are working towards that, and hope to be moving in a good direction on that sometime, hopefully, this fall. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Mr. Samuels?
So I have a comment. I think, first of all, I think all that is outstanding, showing that you guys are moving in the right direction as far as improvement. I would like to see, and this is actually not as much through you, it's not your department, it's just even kind of overall, it actually be through Rich. I do want us to address more, I don't want to call it customer service, I call it customer experience, how we look at, look to do more training and things like that to implement that, all these improvements, again, outstanding. But I've been that guy, that person who's come in the department, who doesn't know anything about development, and going from point A to point Z. So some of the, whether it be the dialogue, or just the forms you got to fill out, I just want to make sure that the customer experience and how they are handled are something that we work on. Again, not just your department, but I want, again, I'll say it again via through Rich, I'll be working with him, talk with him through that, but to look at how we can improve the customer experience.
All right, Mr. Thompson?
I just want to really say that I think this is a big step toward, number one, maximizing our efficiency with all of our teams. It seems like with everything's on such a cut-and-dry cycle, you know, everything stacks up, and then you really can't do, concentrate on one good thing because you've got so many things. And at least spreading this out and being on a revolving cycle allows everybody's projects to get the attention they deserve without competing for your time necessarily, you know, all at one time. And I think that's good, and I think it's good for the development community, too, because one thing that we hear is, you know, always been, and it's been for many years, is, you know, it's such a long process. It takes forever to get anything done. You know, you hear these things, and whether it's the reality, or whether it's a perception, I think what you're doing is at least listening to that perception and doing what you can to make it better for the end user. And so I think this is a pretty big deal, and I think everybody... the end user. And so I think this is a pretty big deal. And I think everybody, from the staff level to the developer level, will see a big improvement here. So I think a strong word.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We'll jump down to other business. I will open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for All right. No one wishing to speak. I'll turn it over to Council for comments. All right. No one wishing to comment. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss economic development.
I'll make a motion. We go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, is there any further business to come before this council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.